Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd meeting of the Concord Select Board. I would remind everyone that we're being both broadcast and recorded. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, on which our town accountant warrants minutes for November 4th, gift acceptance to the Concord-Carla Community Chest of $3,812.50 for volunteer coordinator account, $8,686 to the outreach worker account, $5,115.50 for the social service coordinator account, and $291.50 for the benefit costs account. There are a number of one-day special licenses, first for the Concord Museum on the 6th of December from 6:00 to 9:00 at 53 Cambridge Turnpike, all alcoholic beverage, Community Youth Theater on January 4th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at 53 Church Street, wine and malt only, and then the following are all for the Concord Film Project at 40 Stowe Street, wine and malt beverages only, on December 4th from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., on December 6th from 11:00 to 7:00 to 11:00, on December 7th from 7:00 to 11:00, on December 8th from 2:00 to 6:00, on December 12th from 6:30 to 10:30, on December 13th from 7:00 to 11:00, on the 14th from 2:00 to 11:00 p.m., on the 15th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., on the 17th from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m., on the 19th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., on the 20th from 2:00 to 11:00 p.m., on the 21st from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., on the 22nd from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and Salt Box Catering on the 12th of December from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, also a wine and malt beverage only. I would entertain a motion.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I apologize it didn't make it with the original packet, but there was an updated packet posted to the website with my town manager's report. There was a document or memo from Town Council about the CPA articles. We had some discussion about those in the past. I won't go through all that, but they do reinforce some of their opinions on it.
Just for the people watching CPR?
CPA.
CPA, okay.
Community Preservation Act. And just a brief update on our theft issue, data loss issue, things are still ongoing in terms of the investigations, and there are some data work that we have to engage in to kind of define the potential impacts for individuals, and we're still going through that. It is more time-consuming than I think we thought it was going to be, but we're actively engaged in that, and once all the investigations come to a conclusion, we will, you know, figure out appropriate next steps, including notifications and potentially personnel actions and other things that, some of which will, by necessity, will remain confidential, others we will report as broadly as we possibly can. And then, good news, we did receive an award from the MMA. It is the Kenneth Picard Municipal Innovation Award, and it really has to do with Town of Concord's use of social media, like especially, I think they Facebook Live town meeting last year, and that was one of the things that they had submitted for, so it's nice to be recognized by the statewide association, and I really, the credit goes to Kate Hodges and Erin Stevens and the folks in the office. While the letter is addressed to me, that's really my only involvement in anything that went into getting this award, so I am pleased for the town. I also unfortunately wanted to announce the passing of longtime Long Meadow Fire Captain, retired fire captain, Donnie Prentice. He'd been with the town for almost four years. I obviously didn't overlap with him, but Chief Judge, who worked with him for a long time, said he was a Concord resident, I think Concord native as well, and just an awfully nice person and an outstanding fire officer, so there'll be services, I think, in the paper for him next week. And then finally, we, with the weather tonight, I am, we are looking at the forecasts and reviewing, like we did last night or early this morning. We were able to open town offices on time, and I want to give Concord CPW accolades for making sure the roadways were clear for us, everyone to get here. Most people were able to get here on time, although I did hear from people who lived in other towns who had a tough time in their town. Tomorrow's, quite frankly, looks worse, and so we are looking into potentially delaying the opening of town offices to make sure that road crews can get their work done and get the facilities cleaned up the way they need to be for both employees and the public. So I just ask members of the board and members of the community to make sure they check the website and/or Facebook page for possible delays in town offices opening. I can tell you that several communities have already announced delays, so I'm pretty superstitious about doing that the night before, but we may send out something, because I think greater notice leads to, allows people greater flexibility in managing their morning, so just a heads up on that. That's all I have.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Do you know, speaking of the schools have made a judgment about tomorrow yet?
No, in fact, I just saw that the superintendent, I think, is waiting for the morning as well. The schools have a half-day anyway, and so there's no delay.
It's all work.
Yeah, it's all, it's all or nothing on a half-day, so I think she's gonna see if the certainty associated with, or the uncertainty, I guess I should say, with the forecasts gets firmed up in the morning. I'm consulting with our operations team, kind of as we speak, to try and figure out if it's appropriate to give it earlier notice.
Given the prevalence of the, Mr. Pavlick's weather forecasting, I'm sure most of the students are consulting him on tomorrow's probable.
Yeah, I'm sure it depends on who had a test in what class tomorrow.
Indeed. Any other questions for? I just have a couple of very quick remarks. We had a very successful parade and tree lighting ceremony yesterday. As reported to me, there were hardly any parking and a huge crowd, so that's despite the not all of that great weather. Sounds like it was a-
Big crowd.
Pretty crowded. That's great. And then a reminder that everybody that this Saturday at 8 o'clock is the Town Law Preview Meeting.
8:30?
I thought it was 8 o'clock.
8:30.
8:30. 8:30. I don't believe a word of, what did they say, about 8 o'clock? And so we'll, we will meet here and learn sort of a number of the articles, and we'll get into some of that a little bit later, tonight actually. So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a change of manager at Teresa and Cafe LLC Doing Business as Trailands Cafe located at 97 Lowell Road. I'd like to have a motion to open a public hearing.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Please identify yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Jim White. This is my daughter Elizabeth Akers-Moore. We own the cafe.
You're here?
We are here to request a change in manager to Marissa Lamonie. Right now Manny Rodriguez is the manager of the cafe. He will be moving over to the market. Marissa has been with us for several years, very qualified, and I think she deserves the position.
So a change of location.
Right. She's changed location. Right, right.
Okay, and Jeremy, the application is in order and complete?
Yes.
Let's see. Do we have any questions for Elizabeth or Jim?
No.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
So move?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any additional questions from the board?
No.
None, then I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the application for change of manager for Trails and Cafe LLC Doing Business as Trails and Cafe located at 97 Lowell Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda- I thought you didn't want to get home.
I don't, I was gonna say, I was gonna sit anyway.
So, the next public hearing is a change of managers for the Concord Market LLC Doing Business as a Concord Market located at 77 Lowell Road. Is there a question?
I was just wondering if we could close that-
We did.
We did.
We did.
We did. So, again for the record.
My name is Jim White. My daughter Elizabeth Akers-Moore. We own Concord Market. Manny Rodriguez-
No.
Sorry, hang on. We didn't open a public meeting.
Public hearing.
Okay. Now move to open the public meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
My name is Jim White. My daughter Elizabeth Akers-Moore.
Still Jim White.
We own Concord Market. We're here to request that Manny Rodriguez be appointed as manager for the market to replace Elizabeth, who has been acting as manager for the past year. Manny, I think many of you know him, is perfectly suited to handle beer and wine. He's an aficionado, which I am not, so happy to recommend him.
Good. And again, Jeremy, the application is in order, and are there any questions that you have? Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, move to close a public hearing.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the application for change of manager for Concord Market LLC Doing Business as Concord Market located at 77 Lowell Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am gonna sit for a little while though.
The next item on our agenda is the proclamation, Kukula Day proclamation. We have the proclamation here. I know there are folks in the audience who want to speak. Who wants to speak first? Mr. Wayne? Phil?
No comment?
No comments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Phil, you're-
It's just-
No.
I'm sorry.
Tell us who you are and why you're late.
My name is Peter Lovis, and I'm the proprietor of the Concord Cheese Shop.
And do you have something you want to say?
I think, I appreciate you entertaining the proclamation. It's been, this will be our 10th year. It's a lot of fun. It creates a lot of economic vitality in the community. People come from all over the, all over the country to come see a cheese parade. It's the only cheese parade that I know of, although it was imitated in California last year for a very small group in a market. I think it sets Concord apart as being a place that people want to go, people want to come see. I think in terms of economic vitality, we need to have people answer the question, what do you want to do today with, let's go to Concord, whether it's to see Louisa May Alcott's house, or they've heard this crazy parade is happening, this crazy cheese parade happens. For whatever reason they want to come, I want to give them a reason to come, and I think it's another reason that people enjoy Concord and see it as a destination.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the-
What's a question? Does the town pay for the police detail?
No, I pay for the police detail.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right. Anybody else in the audience? Some, some to say? All right, then I would be pleased to entertain a motion.
Move to issue the proclamation as stated for Kukula Day.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a second to move to authorize the town crier to read the proclamation at Kukula Day Parade.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Peter, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I serve with the pleasure of the Senate.
Yes, you do. And it is a pleasure.
Steve being otherwise known as the Town Crier.
We'll see you at the parade.
Yes.
Thank you. Thousand-pound wheel this year.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
I've heard it's the largest wheel of cheese ever imported to the United States.
I don't want to know how it got here.
Well, it's coming here by horse-rod carriage, and they don't swim.
How are you, how are you gonna cut it? I mean-
Well, you'll just have to see it.
All right, all right. I'm happy to do that.
It'd be interesting to see, at least. Thanks for seeing me. See you later. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a review of the 2019 town meeting with the town moderator. Now, the moderator, would you like to join us? We're not having item number eight, which was a review of the proclamation process. We didn't really have anything we needed to do.
Thank you for clarifying my confusion. I thought there was one more item. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Select Board. I'm Carmen Reese, your town moderator, as you know.
And you live at-
Thank you very much for-
And you live-
Oh, I live at 52 Devon Street in Concord. Thank you very much for putting this discussion on the agenda this evening. I wanted to go over with you the compiled results, which you have a summary of on paper of the questionnaire from, the ex-questionnaire from town meeting in 2019. It was, there were, there were 13 different questions. We had, we kept the surveys open electronically for a couple of weeks after town meeting, actually maybe three weeks, as well as the ability for people to turn in paper copies in the town clerk's office, and they did, they did kind of dribble in for a while, and in the end, we had 127 completed questionnaires, 59 on paper, 68 electronically, and that represents about 21% of the average attendance at town meeting, which if you average all the nights was 616 people, so it's not a bad turnout for a questionnaire.
It's a good time.
Would love to hear from more people, but that's not a bad turnout. The purpose of this questionnaire was really not to create statistically valid results, and a statistician would be necessary for that, as opposed to yours truly, but really it was intended to get a sense of the meeting about a few topics. One of the topics was the time at which we start town meeting. One was the time at which we end town meeting. Another was the use of pro and con microphones. Another was the acceptance of questions submitted by email to town meeting during the meeting. And then finally, there were a series of questions asking people for feedback about the experience of our experiment with electronic voting that, that we did on Tuesday night of the meeting last year. And I will, I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to send this summary, which I have done for you, which kind of gives, I, people were asked to strongly agree or strongly disagree on a scale of 1 to 5. We did have one little glitch in the electronic version where the strongly agree and disagree were reversed on a couple of questions, but in general, I think people figured it out, so I don't think that really impacts our sense of the meeting that we got from these And there was also a full page that people were invited to write comments on, and so that they weren't foreclosed from commenting on other things that were important to them with respect to town meeting, and there were lots and lots of comments, and I've, I've given you a summary of those as well. So, out of this, I have a few conclusions and recommendations, and I would say two of these are for the Select Board, and the rest really are for me, the moderator. The first is that I don't see any reason to change the start of town meeting time from 7:00 p.m. was pretty much universal agreement that 7:00 is the right time, and there was some sentiment that, yeah, maybe starting at 6:40 probably would be a good idea, but not enough. It doesn't seem to me to do it. There were certainly a lot of comments that 7:00 would be great if we actually started at 7:00, and that is a point well taken. We do have a laundry list of things we must get through before we start in the evening. I'll see what I can do to abbreviate that this year, and there were a variety of objections to how long we spent on tributes this year. Now, of course, it was a very unusual year because we had a departing town manager after 25-plus years, and we had more than the usual number of elected persons departing because we had some folks who didn't run for reelection, so, and we have one person who was defeated in election, so there will be time limits in the future on tributes, just as a heads-up, and so we'll try and be responsive to the voters in that way. Okay. The second is on the no new business after 10:00. And the specific question that people were asked was, well, should there be no new business after 10:00, even if that means we're gonna have to spend one more night when going till 11:00 would allow us to finish on the night we're on? And this was a thing, most people, a lot of people agreed, but they were short of a majority, and there was a significant minority that disagreed or strongly disagreed that we should have that 10:00 stop time, even if we pushed on, even though if we pushed on for an hour, we would finish, and there were 20% of people who were just neutral. So my suggestion to you to think about is moving that no new business motion from 10:00 to 10:15, and doing it on all nights of town meeting, including the last one. And that's kind of a compromise measure, you know, that get, in three nights of town meeting, that gets you an extra 45 minutes, which might be enough, to avoid the fourth night in some instances, especially if we can do a little better at the front end in terms of what times, what time we actually start. It's not that much later than 10:00, and it responds to the almost majority of people who really like not to be pushing really late on that last night, and at the same time, it would maybe give you a better chance of not having to push for a fourth night after our third night. So it's a thought, and that, that is, and I leave that to you. This is, and it's not a decision that you have to make until town meeting comes, what that motion is gonna be.
Can anybody from the floor amend it? Or propose that it be 10:30 instead of 10:15, or?
Yes. Historically, the meeting hasn't done that, and has left it to the Select Board to do it, but I, it's certainly a proper motion to be made from the floor.
I'm thinking about the special circumstances that none of us can anticipate year to year of, you know, I know that one of the concerns has been clustering articles together that were intended to be clustered together, and hoping to get them all in on one night.
Right. That was, that was an unfortunate occurrence this past year, where we had the four affordable housing articles scheduled for a single night, and in my wildest dreams, it did not occur to me that we were not gonna finish four articles in one night. And so we had a 10:00 motion, and we did not finish all four of those articles on one night, which was really too bad. There were a lot of people who were there in the audience for those four articles. So I learned a lesson there with respect to special scheduling.
But I'm thinking just to per Mike's thought, is maybe if the, if we educated everybody at town meeting that it was within their purview, if somebody wanted to make that motion, they could. I don't know how much, you know, I don't know what, we asked the question just now. I wonder what others in Concord would know or not know.
Well, one of the reasons to make the motion at the beginning of the evening, and for people to know that that's a motion that's typically gonna be made, is so that people know how to plan their babysitting, their rides home, and so on. And that reliability of knowing what time things are going to stop, I think, really matters to people. It also helps with the prediction of when things are going to come up. I mean, we never, we're never 100% accurate, but we can give people an idea of what night they need to be at town meeting to present on their articles, and if we know exactly what time we're stopping every night, it's a little easier to do that. So I do still think that it's, it's more of a policy decision than anything else, what you want to do here. It is certainly open to individuals to tweak that if they want to, but I, but, you know, to be honest, I would hate to see that become a very changeable thing, where, you know, we'd lose that predictability of what's gonna happen.
Can individuals make a motion at any point to, like, let's say we vote at the beginning of the night for 10:15, and then it looks like if we just change it to 10:30, we'll get through everything we planned. Can somebody make a motion at 9:30 to change it, or that's it?
Yes. Okay.
And that's always been the case.
Yes.
People typically don't.
Right.
And you, while you indicated you didn't think a change was in order, start time at 7:00?
Right.
And when is it we set that start time?
Typically, you set that start time when you publish the warrant, so when the warrant goes to the printer, that is when you set the start time, because-
So, so.
It says 7:00 right on the front of it, and that's the notice of the time and place of town meeting.
Okay.
I like your suggestion of 10:15, or even that we consider 10:30, because I think if town meeting can finish in three nights instead of four, it might help on participation, and it might help a lot of things.
Right. I think that, I think that those people who feel pretty strongly about 10:00 might be willing to see a slide to 10:15, but 10:30 could feel to many of those people like a bridge too far. This is not, there's no science here, but-
And it's, remember, it's no new business.
Right. Yeah. Right. That's right. Doesn't mean you're gonna stop.
It has nothing to do with the-
Right. Right. And so just, just to, on the other things that I asked for my own information, for the moderator's information, pro and con microphones, the, people are evenly divided. Some people hate them, some people really want them for everything, and there's really no mandate either way, and I, I think that I'm gonna discontinue using them and figure out other ways to make sure that we're hearing from both sides on an article where people are, you know, among the complaints about pro and con microphones are that the gymnasium's a big place, and you might have to go a distance to get to the correct microphone, plus you have to figure out which microphone that is, and the signs aren't always easy to see, and there's not that much we can do about that, and people don't always observe the pro and con signs- Right. Which means that the people who do observe them sometimes feel very put out that, that, you know, their side has perhaps not been heard from, and so it just seems like, okay, never mind the pro and con microphones, and we'll just make sure that if we're hearing from a lot of people who are in favor or against, that we make sure we look around to see, is there anybody who is opposed to this? And then we may go there to just kind of balance it.
So you pick somebody out of a line, three people back?
No, but to a particular microphone, to, you know, among the people who are at the So if we have four or five microphones, and none of them are pro or con, you know, if, if we're hearing mostly pro, say, then I might ask, you know, out of those of you who are next, is there anyone who wants to speak against this article? And we might go there.
That's good. It might also help then to move the question, because if you have eight people in line, and they're all speaking pro, maybe that's a sign that the audience has already made up their mind also, maybe. up their mind also, maybe.
One could hope.
And the email questions, you know, a lot of people were, a large percentage of people were just neutral on this, and a lot of people felt very negatively about it because they didn't like the idea that someone who chose not to come to town meeting might have precedence over someone who was at a microphone. And if you wait until there's no one at a microphone, well, now you're making the meeting longer and this person can't vote anyway. So, okay. It seems like there's not, there's not a real groundswell of support for doing the email questions. And it did take us some additional staff and volunteer and organization time to do that. And we didn't get a lot of questions at town meeting last year, and the questions that we did get tended to be things like, what time is article such-and-such going to come up? Or why can't I sit in the comfortable auditorium seats? So, they weren't actually constructive questions. So, so I think that was a reasonable experiment, and it's not one that the voters are really very much in favor of continuing. That doesn't say anything about email questions at the hearings, however.
Yeah.
Because I think more people watch the hearings and there's no voting going on there. And the purpose of the public hearings is to get feedback from the public and discussion going. So, I think there's a much better argument for email questions during the hearings than there is during town meeting. So, I would, I would still urge you to consider doing that at the hearings as well as the planning board and the finance committee to take email questions during the hearings. Okay. Finally, electronic voting. So, there was a majority of voters in favor of using the clickers for two-thirds votes and votes that otherwise would require a manual count, but it was a bare majority. And since it was a bare majority, it's not really a mandate from the voters that this is a thing that they want to do, which to me means it's really a policy question for the board about how to spend your money, how to spend the town's money. And we have a, we have an estimate from the company, Turning Technologies, actually, it's not an estimate, it's a quote, to do our four and ounce of town meeting. And if they came, if they sent a person, as they did last year, to set things up and troubleshoot during the meeting, it would cost $11,400. And if you didn't have the person there, it would cost a little under $8,000. And most towns that use their technologies do it themselves and don't have someone fly in from wherever they are, Ohio, to manage the technology. And I think our people would certainly be competent to do it so that the price really is that slightly under $8,000 price. That said, there's a lot of other things to spend $8,000 on, and I don't think we have a mandate to do this.
Carmen, is it a bare majority?
It's like 51%.
But was, when you looked at the opposed, were they really opposed or was it an on-off switch question?
So, at the margins, there was strong feeling in both directions. So, the people who were against using it for those purposes were against it for any purpose, were against electronic voting, generally speaking. But there were also about an equivalent number or percentage of people at the other end who wanted electronic voting and wanted it for every vote. So, those extreme positions were kind of balanced with everybody else kind of in the middle saying like, oh, it might be a good idea and, you know, with some different feelings about how you ought to use it. And the most popular use of electronic clickers was for standing votes and two-thirds votes. And those are the ones that tend to take us a little more time. Takes us a good 15 minutes to count a vote. And I, I think, one interesting question was, I asked folks whether you, whether they agreed, strongly disagreed, five gradations, with the statement that town meeting should never use electronic clickers, electronic voting for any purpose. And that, there was an overwhelming no on that, an overwhelming no, I disagree with that. So, you know, that, that kind of tells you that, well, you know what, this is a reasonable idea to use electronic voting, just not sure exactly how we want to do it. So, and that was like 80% of the voters disagreed with, disagreed or strongly disagreed.
But if it's restricted to two-thirds of votes and standing votes over a four-night period, that's 10 times?
So, I asked the town clerk, actually, to pull together some numbers for me over the last 10 years of how many times we had counted votes at various town meetings. And the average is two or three counted votes in annual town meeting. We have had a couple of years where we had none. In the last 10 years, there was no meeting where we had more than three counted votes. There are, you know, we sometimes have more than, we sometimes have multiple two-thirds votes, and I suppose technically those don't, if you don't have to count them, they don't take any more time. But it's really good to be really certain about those votes. And for the moderator, they tend to be harder to count, the majority votes, the two-thirds votes.
And, and the price point of a little 8,000 or a little bit less is just to rent the equipment regardless of how many times it's used?
Right.
For the four nights?
Yes.
So, so once trained, it's, that's just a standard price.
Doesn't matter. You could use them for every vote or one vote, and that's how much it costs. Now, the interesting thing is too, I have a page of what we spent on town meeting last year and last year's budget. And a frustrating thing is that the rental costs that we pay for chairs and tables and for the sound system and the big screens and so forth, if we want to know that we have those things for four nights, we have to rent them for four nights. And you don't get your money back if you use them for three. And it does not seem possible to bid it to get three nights with an option for a fourth. So, the only way you could, so what you would save then by not going to a fourth night is the cost of the tellers, the police and the DPW overtime. And, you know, that is, let's see, it's around $2,800 a night for police and DPW. So, and then, and $1,100 for tellers. So, that ends up being, you save like $4,000. So, you, you don't break even on, on the cost of electronic voting if you, if you, if you save that, that additional night because there isn't really a way. Now, the only way you could do it is if you decided that we're going to do town meeting three nights in the gymnasium, and if you had to go to a fourth night, you would do it in the auditorium. And that's doable, but it's a pain in the neck for town staff because it's basically they have to set up from scratch for a whole nother meeting to do it in, in the auditorium. And the Minuteman network has to move all their stuff, you know, it, you know, it all, it would all change to, to do it there. So, that is doable, and it probably wouldn't, it probably wouldn't cost us any more money to do that. It's really, because a lot of those people are salaried, but it would cost us in goodwill to...
So, I know it's our decision, but...
And potential error, I think.
Say, say it again?
Potential error. Error, potential error, you know?
Think?
Possibly. Yeah, possibly.
So, do you have a recommendation about?
No, I don't because I, you know, I can see it's reasonable to do this either way, to do it or to not do it. And I, I think it comes down to a, I don't see an overwhelming desire, I see a slight preference, not an overwhelming desire of voters to use electronic voting. And I, I don't see that it will save us money unless we decide that we're going to go to a system where we use the auditorium for the fourth night, and that is fraught in its own way because it will be more difficult. And there's a lot of other things that are competing for funds in the town budget. So, I'm a firm believer that the whole budget has to get done, weighing all the pieces against each other. So, this is one of many things that it might be nice to do. But it seemed important to me to close the loop on this because we spent time on it, we asked people questions, and people will want to consider a decision about what to do about it, and nothing is a perfectly acceptable result.
Well, Carmen, wouldn't you have to rent equipment for the auditorium too?
No. In the auditorium, we have, we have screens installed, camera projectors, you know, they're all, they're all part of the room. So, we just basically just, you just plug the laptop into the system that's in there. We don't have that in the gymnasium, so we have to bring all the stuff in.
Yeah, but the difference is also that there's usually a musical. I mean, it's not just as easy, I think in the past, we've had some conflict with...
Yeah. I mean, we, we have, last year, we did reserve the, we did reserve the auditorium for every night of town meeting, and that was okay. It's a pain in the neck for the high school. Having us there at all is a pain in the neck for the high school. But, but, you know, one of the things that would mean actually is that the setup would have to happen during the day in the auditorium, and the high school does use the auditorium for classes and so forth during the day, and that would be, that would be a difficulty and imposition on the high school for that.
And you're still of the opinion that returning to the auditorium is not an attractive one?
Well, if we return to the auditorium, we cannot, we've had just short of 1,000 people at our last two annual town meetings, and we accommodate them all in one space in the gymnasium. We can't do that using the auditorium, so we would still have to use the gymnasium as our second space, and then we would be using two spaces instead of one. That means, you know, you've got to have an assist, you've got to have a town clerk in both places, you've got to have a moderator and a deputy moderator in each place, still going to have to rent stuff. I mean, we wouldn't have to rent chairs, you could make people sit on the bleachers in the, if you used the gymnasium as overflow, people are not pleased by that. But, you know, we certainly, we certainly could go back to that, but the, the auditorium is just a terribly difficult place for a meeting where people need to move around and get to a microphone because the rows are very long, the seats are very steep. We have a lot of people who move around with some care when they come to town meeting, and there's not enough handicapped seating. The facilities for the tables, for the town boards are very limited because the orchestra pit, there are two choices, the height of the stage or the height of the bottom of the pit. You can't make it the same level as the floor in the auditorium, that's just not an option. And so, we have wires and duct tape and all kinds, you know, we do use the auditorium for special town meetings because we have a smaller number of people and it's less of an imposition on the high school to do that, but there's a lot of things that are hard about it. So, Carmen, I'll just note on that, on that point, I have brought to the middle school building committee the request that they think about as they think about a design for the middle school, the use of the public spaces, the, the large gathering spaces in the middle school for public meetings. And that would mean, for example, having an auditor, if you can have an auditorium, which is not a given, I understand for a middle school, but if you're going to have an auditorium, that it not be pitched like this, that maybe it's more gradual the way our old auditorium was, that it's easy to get up and walk around, and maybe the aisles are such that it's easy to get out from your seat to get to a microphone and so on. I'm sorry, Linda.
So, notwithstanding your earlier comments about the, the electronic voting, what I'm thinking about is whether or not a second year really is a better pilot on this. Because again, as you said, you didn't have a clear mandate, but at least it was just over 50%. There were comments about people being engaged. Among those comments, I thought there were a few comments at least that signaled engagement in terms of being able to see the readout for what had just happened. And I'm thinking about that in terms of also potentially trying to gain some time with the, adding 15 minutes.
Right.
And whether or not, this might not be the year to, it might be helpful to have a second year with the two working together and just see where we are.
We were able to get our demonstration free last year, they won't give us another free demonstration. If we wanted to do it again, we're going to be paying. But we could certainly pay for one night instead of four if we wanted to try it for one night. Yeah.
So, I, I agree that it was a great experiment, and I thank you for implementing it. I thought it was really successful. I agree with Linda. Maybe it's worth trying for one night this year. But I did a back-of-an-envelope kind of a calculation because I think when you're talking about the budget, okay, you're talking about it's about $8,000 or $9,000, and then we might save $4,000 if we save a night. But I'm also thinking about valuing the people's time because this is, we really want to get people to come to town meeting. People are really, really busy. And so, I did sort of this back-of-the-envelope thing that I made up that people got $50 an hour at their job. Who knows? Some are way higher, some are way lower, whatever. And I came up with that if only 30 people show up, we'll break even on that because 15, really. And so, I really think that it's absolutely worthwhile to consider it.
So, when does that decision need to be made?
Well, we would, okay, so I think the town manager probably needs to know whether this is in or out of his budget. So, that has to happen...
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon. The, I don't know when the budget is finalized, but certainly by the time you close the warrant, which is January 10th. So, I think by then, you'd need to decide whether this item is in the budget or out of the budget. And, and then beyond that, I think that Turning Technologies is a large enough organization that we don't run the risk that they won't have the items for us if we haven't reserved So, you know, we probably don't have to worry too much about that, but we would have to do it, you know, or probably no later than February, I would think, to make sure that they're there. There also was a, a question raised, Chris Carmody raised the question whether we would actually have to bid this, and I, that's above my pay grade, don't know the answer, rather than just ordering them from Turning Technologies. I think that the Turning Technologies equipment is unique enough that if you wanted specifically what they have with the radio frequency technology versus internet use and, and, you know, clickers that have a Braille option and various things, you know, that you may find that there's not really anybody else who actually meets those qualifications. But, but that's a, that obviously would add to the time if it was necessary to bid it, and I don't have an answer to that.
Can I make a comment about the...
I think I probably can.
So, I did meet with the moderator to discuss this, and I don't know that it, I don't think it's in the manager's budget because we don't know what this situation with town, with the IT department's workload will be, you know, on those four days. It's hard to commit to saying, yes, the IT department will staff it and do the, the technology piece of it that we would otherwise pay...
Turning Technologies, yeah.
Turning Technologies, 10, 8, an additional $8,000 or whatever. Turning Technologies, ten, eight, an additional $8,000 or whatever.
No, no, it's three. So it'd be 11.
So three, so $3,000 to do. In terms of balancing the fiscal year budget, as you know, it's, it's amazing how often it comes down to $3,000 to balance it out. But I will say that the sum of money is such that, because the function will take place in FY '20, we certainly could look at an existing appropriation for, and a possible transfer to make it happen if it was for one night. So I, the FY '21 budget may not reflect that at this time, but certainly, hearing the board's comments and working with the moderator, we have some time to sharpen it, and that we're not bound by what's in the budget. I think we could probably find 11,000 or 12,000 dollars now we need to do it.
Okay. That's good to know.
I just wanted to make a comment about the length of time that we use the electronic voting. And I was thinking, I think it would, two nights would be better, because the first night is usually the budgets, the, the town and the, and the big numbers. And then when you, when you schedule special interest articles, it's typically on the second night or not on the first night. And those tend to be the high interest and high turnout items, that I think it would be good to be able to have electronic voting for those.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I will, I'm content either way you guys would like to do this. And, and I think that whichever, whichever way you do it, there are some people who are in favor of it and some people who are not. And that's either way. And it's, and, you know, and it's not.
Very odd. That's never the case.
No, almost never. Right, right. And I do think that, you know, people's opinions might change over time as, as they become more comfortable and see whether it does, there's a great deal of concern that it would really change the character and feel of our town meeting to be using electronic voting. And I don't think that, well, so it's an open question whether the actual use of them would strengthen those fears or help abate them. So we would see what the impact was.
I suggest that we'll get this item on our agenda coming up, and let's find out, do we have to set it out to bid first, because that'll give us a timeline, how long that'll take.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. Next item on our agenda, the Concord Housing Authority request. Folks.
Hello. Marian Nelson, I'm Director of the Concord Housing Authority.
Rick Eifler, Chair, 14 Pleasant Street in Concord.
Good evening.
So, I could start, you can add in it. Actually, our request was to be put on the agenda to discuss, and you do have an item on here for warrant articles, but last year, there was, last town meeting, there was the appropriation from Free Cash for the purposes of affordable housing. And we're just here to discuss whether that is a plan for this year. The Select Board will be putting forth a motion to a warrant article for appropriating from Free Cash.
Is this something you're going to request?
Well, we're not sure how the process goes. I think last year, it was the Affordable Housing Task Force, I believe, that, that had these warrant articles. And so we're actually not sure. I mean, we are in favor of it, so.
All right, well, we, later in the evening, we, we are gonna discuss warrant articles, and I did put a placeholder in that discussion for a request that I thought you were going to make of us. I think it would be perfectly appropriate if you would formally request that of the Select Board. We could take it up ourselves, but I think having it come from you folks would, would be perfectly appropriate.
Yeah. I think then we are, would formally request that.
I think you need to.
Or do we need to do that? We need to have a board vote? Okay.
Plenty of time. We're going to go through the warrant articles this evening that I know about.
Okay.
And then at our next meeting on the 16th, we're actually going to discuss them. And then on the 30th, which is our last meeting of the year, and the last meeting before the warrant closes, we will actually vote to move articles to the warrant. So you have some time.
Okay.
And if you could get it into us by the, our meeting on the 16th.
16th.
That would be helpful to us.
The 16th. One question.
Sure.
I think the way it was presented to the town last year, there was, it was going, it made it seem like it was going to be requested again if there was 5% Free Cash or something like that. Does that sound familiar?
Our Free Cash allocations are always, the policy that we have is Free Cash between 5% and 10% of the budget. And so that's where we try to maintain Free Cash. The idea last year was, we might come back to town meeting for additional allocation of Free Cash until the warrant articles that had to go to the state legislature were either approved or disapproved. And then once that, hopefully are approved, they would provide a continuous stream of funding, and we wouldn't need to make allocations from Free Cash.
But was there language that if the Free Cash dropped below a certain point, that this wouldn't, this wouldn't happen?
Going forward, if Free Cash falls below 5%, I'm sure the Finance Committee would not recommend any allocations from Free Cash.
And at what point do you know whether that is the case or not?
We know, we know, once certification is.
It's usually the fall, isn't it?
Fall, yeah. So we know, and we know.
So we know.
Yeah, the Finance Committee's gonna allocate a million dollars in Free Cash to tax, to the levy. So we will, we're well above, for this year, anyway. We're well above the 5%. That shouldn't be a concern.
Okay.
That was in the, that was in the warrant article, because there was some thinking it would continue for a while. And we wanted to make sure it didn't impinge upon the policy that had been set at 5%, 10%.
Okay.
So Mike, are you suggesting that they make the request to you or send in a draft warrant article?
No, I think, I think you don't need to worry about the language for a warrant article.
So we would request the Select Board.
Select Board's, for a warrant article allocating whatever it is you want to allocate from Free Cash to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
But it would be our support, not of their warrant article. So not our warrant article.
Getting confused. It's our, it would be our, so last year, you moved the article. This year, we would be doing it?
You could, or you could just request us to. I think, given the history of having done it last year, bundled up with these other warrant articles, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think the board would support it. If it doesn't, move it yourself.
Okay, okay, yeah. No, I was thinking that last year, it was kind of implied that you would come back again.
Yeah.
So we'll request that you come back again.
I think it's just support from the housing folks again, because we don't have the, we don't have the funding committee as we did last year.
Right.
And this year, one of the warrant articles will be to create the trust. So I think the difference between, in my thinking, and we haven't discussed it, but the difference from last year and this year, if we go forward with this, is that the money would go into the trust.
Right.
As opposed to go into the control of the town manager with Select Board approval, I think it's what it said last time.
Well, then, I think it should be your warrant article then, because you'll know all that and we won't. So we'll just request that you do it.
Do you get that?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Is there anyone who can give us an synopsis of what we've spent this year so far? I think we put $500,000 in.
Yeah.
And remind us what we've spent it on?
I don't have the exact figures, but we did spend some allocation that we partnered with the Habitat for Humanity. Marsha, do you recall the amounts?
I'm sorry, I don't.
We haven't used the $500,000.
Not all of it. But some of it.
Fifty to us and then the house.
Maybe by next meeting, when we're gonna discuss the articles.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I'm going. Without objection, I'm going to move item number 12, grant of easement to Mass D O T for the Bruce Freeman rail trail, so Marsha can finish her business and go home.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. And the state has to grant us an easement over Route 2, so that, so that we can build our bridge that's going to connect the Concord and Acton portions of the Bruce Freeman rail trail. So we have received a draft easement. It has now been reviewed by my office and by Town Council's office and been revised. It reflects all the, all the requested changes from Town Council, and, and it highlights a map that will be part of that agreement. So you have that, the Select Board is asked to endorse that easement, and then I will forward it to the state. They'll take care of recording it, and then we will be able to build a bridge and maintain it.
Drive a silver spike.
If I had a silver spike, I would.
Well, that's a progress. This is good.
Yes, it is.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm excited. I want it to move faster.
So I just want to understand exactly, so the state owns Route 2.
Correct.
And we are going to have control and maintenance responsibility for the rail trail?
Correct.
So that's why we need to get this easement?
Correct.
All right.
Our maintenance will not be replacement of the bridge, but would be, you know, going out and if we wanted to plow it periodically or mowing along the sides, going up to it, the state controls the right-of-way. And so that easement is over what is the right-of-way for Route 2.
All right.
Sort of the air rights, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion then.
Move to accept the grant of easement by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the use of highway property in Concord in connection with bridge number C19039, crossing Union Turnpike, who knew, Routes 2 and 111, as further specified in the document titled "The Massachusetts Department of Transportation Grant of Easement for Use of Highway Property in Concord by and between the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the Concord Select Board."
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So there's two copies of the signature pages that we will need, and we will get one back, and then one will go to be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Yeah.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is to talk about the warrant articles for the 2020 town meeting. And I will be able to do that as soon as I find them. Here they are. So, as I mentioned, what we will do tonight is simply report out those warrant articles that we know about. And then on the 16th, we will actually have an opportunity to have drafts of them all and have a discussion on any of those that you want to have further discussion on. And then on December 30th, we will actually move to vote those, those articles to be part of the warrant. And then, again, I remind everybody that we have a preview meeting coming up this Saturday at 8:30. Okay, so the first is a stabilization fund for the middle school projects brought to us by the Finance Committee a few meetings ago. That would be an allocation from Free Cash. The Pollinator Health Advisory Committee has informed me that they have proposed article banning neonicotinoids on any new leased town land. I have mentioned a number of times, special liquor licenses that we would advance. We have the Means Tested Property Tax Exemption, essentially refiling of a new bill eliminating the Sunset provision and moving to a different income number that makes it easier for the assessor's office to, to manage that process. We've had a request to support a warrant article on the prohibition of expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure for new construction and significant rehabilitation in town. We've been asked to support that. If we do, we do. If we don't, I'm sure Citizens Group will bring that.
And that's modeled after a similar warrant article in Brookline.
Brookline, yes. We have the Affordable Housing Trust warrants, and they're coming to talk to us, I think, on the 16th with that article. A freak, we just heard from the Affordable Housing folks, a Free Cash allocation from affordable housing. And then we have this really complicated set of six that will become three warrant articles. So if the legislature, by the end of the calendar year, we have three home rule petitions in front of the state legislature, granting the vote to 17-year-olds for local elections, Senate Bill 2318, the real estate transfer tax, and Senate Bill 2317, the building permits surcharge. Those are pending. If those are approved by the end of the session, December 31st, then those would be the warrant articles that we would move at town meeting. And I have spoken with town moderator, and we will be able to suffice for the, for the warrant, just support of those House bills, rather than providing an entire draft of the bill. If they don't approve those at the end of the legislative session, we have to go back to town meeting with Articles 25 and 26 from 2019 town meeting, and Article 18 from the 2018 town meeting, the 17-year-old vote. So we will have to have all six of those ready to go and vote on, on the 30th. And then, when the legislature goes out of business on the 31st, we will just abandon whichever of these articles didn't get, make it through the process. So is that as clear as it's gonna get?
Yes.
So I don't think there's any controversy about those last six in terms of our willingness to, to deal with those. So at our next meeting on the 16th, we will provide a list of these warrant articles, and then we will have a discussion on them. And then on the 30th, we will launch and move them to the warrant.
So in terms of process, if there are other warrant articles, like town staff may be working, I just don't know how it works. Do those come at a later date, or do those have to be in this bunch?
Who is going to provide them to the warrant?
Well, we presented the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant.
Then we would love to have them on the 16th.
Okay.
And if you don't have the exact language of it, that's fine. We can still hear about it and talk about it and reserve judgment for the 30th.
But the 30th is the deadline for?
Well, the warrant closes on the 4th, I can't remember.
January 10th.
10th. So I'd like to get it done.
Yeah.
But we would probably have one more bite at the apple, I think, probably on the, let's see, the 1st is a Wednesday.
12th, 10th.
The 8th. So we might have a, do we have a meeting on the 6th?
I'm looking.
No, we don't.
We have, in January, we have the 13th and the 27th.
Yeah.
So will they be ready to be presented at the preview meeting this Saturday? Just in concept? Yeah?
No, we put a placeholder on, and last year, the same thing, a personnel bylaw was on as a placeholder. I don't think you could do that. HR Director Amy Foley and I have, I've been talking about, she's been educating me on some of the changes that she's discussed with the Personnel Board. I don't want to speak on, get too far ahead of them, but we just, last couple of days, have started to initiate that dialogue with the Chair of the Personnel Board. So I don't want to say, yes, we're working on it, when I really haven't had that conversation with the Personnel Board. But I also don't want to forfeit the opportunity if they already know what they want to do and they're motivated to put something together.
Well, you don't forfeit the opportunity if you don't report something at the preview meeting on Saturday. The only time you forfeit it is if you don't have a warrant article submitted by the time the warrant closes, and you're done.
Okay. I just, it, it works, it works a little differently in a lot of matters, so I'm just trying to get a sense of the process. Thank you.
Any other?
So the Planning Board was going to bring forward, did you list them?
I've not, no, the Planning Board will do their own. We, there's a whole host of Planning Board articles that they will present.
I just want to make sure they're.
No, just the ones we, we are gonna have responsibility for.
Okay.
You're the Select Board articles.
The Select Board.
Right.
I had a question on this, one that says by petition. Did you say this is the fossil fuel infrastructure? So is this group going to submit by petition, and they want our support, or they want us to submit the...
They would like us... They would like for it to be our article.
So that's what we'll be discussing.
Right. Okay. Just as our housing authority wants.
Okay.
And just as the Finance Committee with the building.
Right. Right.
Well, so we can decline to support any of those warrant articles.
Okay.
And the petitioners could get the law note warrant by getting certain signatures. I think the only articles that we can not deny being placed on the warrant article or zoning article say. But any other article, we can deem it not in the town's interest and review to put it on the warrant. And so we want to do that on the 30th. So if we would, for example, decide that we don't want any part of the affordable housing one, those folks could still have plenty of time to get their warrant article in if that's what they want.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, or... Okay. We... I made a remark to the board just before we began that we were going to, in the interest of snow, not have liaison reports unless there were some things needed to be reported. And Terry, you said you had two events you wanted to report.
Just very quickly, there's a few events coming up before our next meeting. At the library on December 13th, there's going to be a reception for the new curator that they've hired. Her name is Anka Voss. December 13th at 3:00 P. M. in the trustees' room. Everyone is invited. They also have a number of events for Little Women Week.
Ah, yes.
And that will also be happening before our meeting, starting the 13th, 14th, 15th. But can get in touch with the library, like including the original manuscripts will be on file.
On the town website about...
Yep. And the other one is the Cultural Council has received 32 projects that they're trying to decide about. And they're going to have... They're seeking input, so they would like to have a community input session on the 13th from 5:30 to 7:00 in the Hunt Gym.
Right. Thank you. Any other?
To that point, on December 11th, there is going to be a public dialogue discussion with the K N L, or K L M, the consultants that have been hired by the Climate Action Advisory Board to work on the fulfillment of a grant process that we've won.
It's municipal vulnerability preparedness, the MVP program. So it's...
So it will feed into the Climate Action report, but it's not this... It's sort of a wedge of that. This is going to be the public meeting. So anybody...
It's the 11th?
On the 11th.
Okay.